I'd like to call this meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the absence of the secretary, Ms. Chick, can you please call roll?
Mr. Roman.
Here.
Chick is here, Mr. Zarecki is absent with notice, Mr. Cusino?
Here.
Mr. Iaquinto?
Here.
Ms. Infante?
Here.
Mr. Dwyer. Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you, I make the motion we adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved and supported.
Supported by Mr. Iaquinto, any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Call to the public, there is none. Clarifications, there won't be any. Correspondence, zoning administrative site plan approvals.
She...
Ms. Byrd.
She doesn't have any right now, she hasn't come in, so she...
There was nothing in the packet, correct, okay, thank you. There's no public hearing tonight. Reports of committees, Board of Trustees, Ms. Chick, please.
Board of Trustees met March 13th, the Board received a quote for the installation of water meter at the Public Safety Building. The building's never been metered, it's being charged REUs based on the square footage of the building, as is the norm, and not on use. The concern is that we are not using the system at the rate we are being charged considering the actual number of employees in the building on a daily basis. The Board voted to purchase the meter hoping savings will be recognized with verification of actual use. DDA bylaws were approved. The Board is reviewing and updating the employee handbook with the aid of Labor Council. Discussion on how to use the second floor lease income was had, until a decision is made it will be placed in a separate fund of interest to the Planning Commission. There was a suggestion by the supervisor to have our Building Department needs and duties handled by the Washtenaw County Building Department. There are a lot of information still needed before this goes to a vote and we have a discussion, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Chick? No?
Can I ask about that last, that last?
Mr. Cusino, go ahead.
So they're considering having the county run the building inspections and stuff, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, we didn't get very much information, so we have no details on exactly how that would be handled, what the cost would be, what impact it has on the residents as far as applications and things like that, so it's all kind of up in there, just an idea.
We hire all that out right now anyway, correct? We're using Pittsfield Township and Kirk Weyland?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, wouldn't be much of a difference as far as that goes.
Well, yeah, I hope we have a discussion on next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, staff report, or, I'm sorry, ZBA report, Mr. Cusino?
ZBA did not meet since our last meeting.
Thank you. Staff report, Ms. Byrd?
None.
None. Planning consultant, Mr. Lippens, please.
Yeah, I would just update Planning Commission that the question and answer period on the North Village RFP ended today. The township did receive some questions, and per the approved RFP schedule, the township will be issuing responses to the questions received within one week, and we will post that on the RFP page.
Thank you. Parks and Recs, Mr. Iaquinto?
Yes, at our last meeting, which was last week, we did formulate plans for the community garden. If anyone is interested in a plot for, at the community garden, you can contact Jennifer Carlisle at the Township offices. She will put you on the list. We are working and formulating plans for a better water source there, and we had a discussion on the rules at the Bark Park to see if the Township Board would pass them on to the Planning Commission to see if we can turn them into ordinances so they're enforceable because they're grossly abused, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Chick, question?
Yeah, Mr. Iaquinto, there was a well installed last year or no?
No, there has never been a well, where at, where are you referring to?
At the park, not the park, the garden.
No, there is, we never installed any well. To my knowledge, the, there was a grant for a small handheld well?
Yeah.
That has not been installed, and we did have a discussion to see, Tawn was going to reach out to the wastewater treatment plant because she had heard that they were going to do the install on that.
Okay.
If not, we're, we're looking at that as a water source, or there is an existing well on that property, and we are looking at reviving that and putting in a pump house there on the site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Downtown Planning Group, Ms. Infante?
Yes, I was absent the last Planning Commission, so I'm gonna bring you up to date on the February 26th meeting. The Downtown Development Authority met to talk mainly about their concerns that the rezoning issues be coordinated with the master plan revision, and they wanted to know a little more about how that coordination might be achieved. There's a lot of interest in getting involved with the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program to try to get some assistance, technical assistance, streamlining, particularly the priority of developing downtown. And then there was a motion approved to spend $2,000 of the DDA's own budget to pay for the inspection of 75 Barker to get the facts on whether or not, you know, to get quotes on how much it would cost to, to bring it up to code, or how much it would cost to demolish it. And that's pretty much the balance of it.
Thank you, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item 10A, unfinished business, further discussion on zoning ordinance, revised language. Mr. Lippens?
Hi, good evening, Planning Commissioners, tonight we are talking about temporary specialty stores. I would note in your packet this evening, I also included a revised memo noting the changes that we made that were recommended last month to the language on setbacks and definitions for setbacks and yards, and definitions of equipment services. I also included our schedule for discussing the amendment changes as well as the overall ordinance schedule. In your packet, this is because, you know, we're gonna be working on this all year, so rather than having people refer back, I thought it would just be easier for Planning Commissioners if I continued to, you know, include some of the things we've worked on in your packet, so we don't have to reference past documents. So, just wanted to explain that, and the one that we're focusing on is the first one in your packet, which is regarding temporary specialty stores. So, the issue that we're trying to resolve here is essentially that the township's ordinance only had language to permit Christmas tree sales at holidays, and, you know, frequently, there are, you know, there's probably a desire to do general holiday sales, which is why we revised it to include multiple holidays, but the big one is the 4th of July. So, temporary fireworks sales is often requested around the 4th of July, and it has been, I believe, the township's practice to permit some temporary fireworks sales, but the ordinance doesn't technically allow it. So what we're trying to do is get ahead of that and make some revisions to the ordinance to adopt that actually in advance of 4th of July this year. So, what we've done is we generalized the previously what was called temporary specialty stores, even though it only, the only type of sales that was permitted in this section was Christmas tree sales. We've recommended revising that and calling this temporary holiday sales. And what we've done is kind of generalized this, this, this language to, to permit holiday sales at, at other holidays. I could read through, read through all the changes, but I think that they're fairly straightforward. We've recommended that this can be done with a simple sketch plan review, and we've provided for some issuings of permits, basically, to permit it. So most of this could be done administratively. We've also, I think one of the other key changes here is we have expanded the districts that this could be done in to include the WLD, basically the Whitmore Lake Downtown, North Village, and Waterfront Districts, because we thought it would make sense to potentially permit holiday sales in the downtown area as well. So anyway, I will, I'll take questions, there might be a desire to talk about how this would be administered or even make some more suggestions about the types of sales permitted. You know, this is an interesting section of the ordinance, and one that I think we'd like to get updated soon.
Thank you. Mr. Iaquinto?
So, the administrative aspect, you mentioned that this should be able to be done through a permit process. I am all in favor of that. Is, and, is this something that someone can come to the front counter, fill out the application, and then it's reviewed even by the counter person to see that it's in the proper, proper zoning areas, and then go ahead and sign off on the permit, or what is the process?
The, it requires a review by the zoning administrator, and we've suggested a sketch plan, so basically, you know, we would want a review, if you were to put, you know, a sidewalk sale, or if you were to put a fireworks stand up, we'd wanna know where that was located, and if there was temporary parking associated, where that was located. But that could be, you know, essentially a hand drawn sketch that could be approved, and then that would permit the zoning administrator to ask for additional details, should any be required.
What would the fee be for this, then? This permit process?
I think it would be a zoning compliance permit.
Which is how much?
I don't recall, what's the zoning compliance, Mary, do you know?
It just seems that that's a pretty high cost, in my opinion, for someone to, you know, again, because following the rules, that means Kiwanis needs to start filling out the process and the permits, and they're nonprofit. And again, any entity, it just seems like that's, that's a big expense. So, I'm all, again, I, smaller government is better, in my opinion. And I know we have to follow the rules, and I'm not saying we circumvent any rules, but we have to look at making things streamlined and cost efficient, because again, otherwise it's not, it's too costly then for people in business. Thank you.
Ms. Chick?
On that issue, because the Board sets the fees, we might wanna bring it, if the Planning Commission would like, bring it to the Board to review those fees.
Thank you. Mr. Cusino?
Couple things, is there any length of time associated with these sales, or temporary? Do we know what the, is it requested time, or are there specified times? Is that just left wide open? And then the other question is, number six in this says, "The portion of any parcel used for the sales shall be located no closer than 250 feet from any other parcel that is zoned or used for residential purposes." Okay, if you're including that in the downtown district, you're gonna have a really hard time making anything work over there, for sure. And even in rural areas, my property can be next to somebody else that has a house that's 600 feet away, but his property's less than 250 feet from my property, and therefore, I'm not able to do it. So we might need to think about that, maybe, maybe 250 feet from the structure of the neighboring property, but even still, for the downtown district, that's almost impossible to make anything work.
Mr. Iaquinto?
As an example, the Kiwanis have utilized 75 Barker in the past to do tree sales there, and those lots are narrow, the lot right next door from where the building is, is less than 20 feet. So technically, then, Kiwanis wouldn't be able to utilize that location to sell Christmas trees in the future, if I'm reading this correctly, as Brad points out.
Thank you, Ms. Chick?
I agree, and my, my concern is also number seven, where the parking area shall be confined within the boundaries of the site and not be permitted to spill over into adjacent roads, that's really hard in the downtown area. I mean, there's very few places where you could set up a temporary sales business and not have adequate parking for people that'll utilize it, on the site.
Thank you. I guess I'll, I'll start with my, I look at, I looked at this in, in a lot of detail, and I, I have to preface, you know, my points that I'm gonna bring up, that this, this was an existing ordinance language for Christmas tree lots, and I understand, you know, that you're trying to be more inclusive of different items and times of the year. But there's a lot of shortcomings in what was presented in this language, and I'd like to take the time now, and I guess I'll just start from the top, if that, if that makes it easier. I guess my point being is that if we're, we're going to put to effort into revamping this section of the ordinance, that we should do it correctly. And I guess I have some ideas, but I just wanna bring up some points on this language that I would like to hear the other Commissioners' comments about. So, if you can bear with me, I'll just start at the top with, for Mr. Lippens, and if anyone would like, I mean, go discuss some of these items as I go, that's fine, but. So, I just wanted to clarify that this, this language is going to, the intent of it is going to apply to lots, am I correct? We're not talking storefronts, like vacant storefront that could be opened to sell whatever for a certain period of time, am I correct, Mr. Lippens?
I don't, I mean, theoretically, if someone applied for a temporary holiday sale inside a vacant storefront, I don't know if we would turn them away, but it is, I think, really, it's geared towards tent sales, right? But in the example of, for instance, in the example of 75 Barker, the Christmas trees are sold outside and inside that building.
Okay. So, I, you know, and in the first paragraph, we're talking, you know, it says on individual lots, so I'm assuming it's either a vacant lot or a lot, an outlot of an existing structure, so a lot of my comments weren't geared towards like an existing structure, although it may pose another problem or questions for the township. But, but just to start off, this section's going to be called temporary holiday sales, am I correct?
That's the suggestion.
Okay, and I agree with it, but I think we should have a definition of holiday, temporary holiday sales, if that's possible. Do you think that would be a good suggestion?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Because, really, stores, stores is what threw me off, I'm thinking, okay, well, if it's a vacant building front, I mean, you could be, we could, this could be what we're talking about, but if we have an inclusive definition, I think that would help. If you go to A1, holiday sales may be conducted, and it lists the existing ones that we had, and it's inclusive of the downtown and the general commercial, which I think it was existing too. Holiday sales shall not be permitted in residentially zoned districts, well, AR is, is a residential district technically. So, if, if I'm not mistaken, so maybe we should have permitted in any other residentially zoned district? Am I correct in that? Okay.
Yeah, that's a good distinction.
Number two, in, uh, on the property, on property, churches, schools, or other nonprofit organizations may sell holiday items on property owned by such institution or organization in any zoning district. So, saying on property could be construed, that's why I asked the question at first, if we're going to apply this to structures. On the property, it could be that they could sell it indoor. So, is that our intent? I'm, I'm not sure, I, I still don't think that's probably what our intent is, if we're talking about outside sales with a tent, vacant lots, or parking lot of a business or, or organization. We may wanna change on property somehow, or define it closer. Number three, and so, this is the biggest paragraph that I had the most problem with. Is, is it, does it happen now, or is it permissible now for anyone to have these sales as an access, as an accessory to their principal use? So I guess I'm asking, is it actually applied right now to, to a business or an organization? Mr. Lippens, do you know, or?
Um, so, you know, with respect to, you know, Christmas trees, example of a use where a Christmas tree sale might be considered accessory to a principal use might be like at Home Depot, where, you know, during the holidays, they sell Christmas trees, and that's accessory to the types of uses they already have, so we wouldn't make, not that, I know there's not a Home Depot in the township, this is just a-
Tractor Supply.
Tractor Supply, sure, this is, I'm trying to think of an example that everyone can easily identify with, right? So...
But if Tractor Supply wanted to have, they don't normally like pitch a big tent, sell fireworks, or pitch a big tent. They, I mean, they have them out in front of their store. So, I, I, you know, I can understand, I'm, I'm just saying, is it, I mean, I don't wanna construe that just because you're a certain type of business, you can just, you're exempt. That you could, so anybody could say that's an accessory use to my business. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, and I, I mean, this is existing language that, since we're looking at this, we can change it.
Right.
You know?
That's the way I'm looking at it.
That, you know, holiday sale, the permits required, you know, for, for all businesses, you know?
Okay, well, I, I just see, I mean, it's a question. So, my, my other big issue with number three was that, this is old language, and I'm not sure how things were done years back, or how it is done now, but a permit, by definition of the ordinance, doesn't allow a use. In other words, the only definition of a permit we have is a building permit. So technically, a building permit doesn't give you any authorization, as far as the ordinance goes, to do a temporary sale of anything. What really we should be asking for here is a temporary certificate of occupancy. The occupancy, in our language, a certificate of occupancy pertains to the use on a structure or a premises. So, really, all the terminology that's used in number three is technically incorrect. But I wanted to explain it, you know, and have a conversation with my fellow Commissioners about it. Yes, permits are issued by the Building Department, which would be the building official, but then, if, if you were to do it correctly, as far as getting a temporary certificate of occupancy, that, that would be the zoning administrator, which would make sense, because that's the person doing the review of the application. And that person, who is the zoning administration, also has the authority to utilize the building official, the fire chief, and probably any other inspectors that the township utilizes to go out and inspect a premises for any of these types of temporary sales. So, to me, it would make more sense that it shouldn't be a permit, it should be a temporary certificate of occupancy and done by the zoning administrator. And so then, I got into a bunch of lot more details on the wordage, but I'd like to hear some other Commissioners' thoughts on that. Mr. Dwyer?
Guess I'm a little confused, 'cause it seems as though this language has been in effect for some time, presumably. Presumably, we've been selling Christmas trees for some time. There's a question about what type of permit should they be getting, does that mean we haven't been given permits? There has been no inspection in the past, we have been selling trees within 250 feet of a property, we have been parking on the street. Has all this been going on anyway? And is there a problem with it? Have we experienced problems that we're trying to, you know, actually better here? Or is it all this coming up because it's just in the ordinance, we've just ignored it, but now that we're actually looking at the language, suddenly, we have to address it? So I'm curious as to how long this has been in effect, and how long have we been selling trees without permits? And is it, you know, the permit processor, you know, a problem, if it's never come up before? A little bit of history, I guess.
Good, good question. Mr. Lippens, or Ms. Byrd, would you like to address that question?
So, I don't know if it's, it's, it's been the practice to issue a permit, or if it's basically zoning compliance, and when you complete that process, you're permitted to do it. So I agree with the Chair, that I, I actually like saying, let's use temporary certificate of occupancy by the zoning administrator, because that is, you know, are, it aligns with the language in the ordinance, and it's not a building permit, right? So, it would be, it would be a temporary use permit, and technically, we don't know if that's even a defined thing. So we're cleaning it up, you know, with respect to the questions that came, you know, earlier about the, the streets, park, parking on the streets, and the setback, I think that because, you know, those are kind of new issues that are rising, because we're actually kind of taking this and saying, well, we should be able to do this downtown, too. We do do it downtown, we do Christmas trees downtown, so let's clean it up to make it actually used downtown. And, you know, my suggestion would be to change that setback rules to, you know, must comply with the setbacks in the district, and that might be a good starting point. And then with the overflow on streets, I might add a clause that says, except where on-street parking is permitted. Because obviously, if you can park on street, there's no issue with people, you know, parking on the street. So, you know, we're looking for, looking for comments in this regard, and I know, I, things that are substantive, I tend to wanna bring to the Commission. So these comments that we're getting about how this language will work, and the, kind of effect of the changes we're recommending, this is really the point of our discussion tonight, so that I'm not kind of substantively making a ton of changes before we discuss them. You know, the main issue that brought this language tonight to the table is that, you know, we don't even have anything on the books for fireworks sales, and, you know, the township has been permitting fireworks sales. So, to a certain extent, what you're pointing out is right, there have been some practices that are not technically- There have been some practices that are not technically in the zoning ordinance yet. So we're trying to resolve that.
Thank you. Does that answer your questions, Mr. Dwyer? And I don't even know how it's done today or for this season coming up. I don't know. But hopefully, we're gonna enact the proper scenario with this language. Ms. Infante.
My thinking was along the same lines. It seems that, I looked at some other communities and the language they use and it really varies quite radically from community to community. And it seems, looking at what the practices have been in the past, what practices we are hoping to enable and perhaps what practices we anticipate having problems with is what we need to do first and then move to the language. In other words, what language will support the goal rather than, I think there are issues about whether you have a license or a permit or a, the language really does matter, but the practice is probably what we first need to figure out and then look backwards to the language from that. So just a thought. Because fireworks and Girl Scout cookies are totally different things.
That's a very good thought because we're trying to, we're trying to sort it out. And you're correct, you have to know what the process is to make the language fit the process. So in this case, it's relatively new. So we have to make it apply for not just Christmas trees, but everything else that might come up. So that's, that's the other purpose of my, that's my other intent on bringing up these questions. Ms. Chick.
In regards to the fireworks, is, I know there's inspections that are done for the lighting and everything is supposed to be appropriate, wiring and other apparatus to be utilized at the site. But is there some kind of safety inspection for the fireworks sales, like from the fire department or the, I would believe it'd be the fire department, yeah?
I think it's addressed in, it'd be in part of number four, at the bottom of the first page. I think that's what, that's alluding to, but I didn't get there yet, but I think that's what you're referring to though, Ms. Chick.
But it says they may require an inspection. I would prefer that for fireworks that there was an inspection. My thoughts.
Yeah, I agree. And that was a point that I, that I was going to make. And while you brought it up, I can, I know, Mr. Iquinto, you got questioned, but why don't, why don't I let Mr. Iquinto make his comment?
My question was, what is the issue with, in residential zoning districts? Because there's a lot of lots and there's a lot of other municipalities that allow these type of sales in residential areas. As long as, again, it goes through the process. So why are we excluding residentially zoned districts?
My take on it would be like, and I'll let Mr. Lippens speak further, but I mean, in a relatively denser neighborhood, having somebody pitching up a fireworks tent and selling things, I don't know. But I mean, that would be my concern. But I'll let Mr. Lippens answer also.
Residentially zoned districts are generally protected from commercial activities and that's why they're excluded from this item. You know, with, you know, the agricultural district permits a certain amount of commercial activity that's related to farming. Christmas tree sales, I think, were traditionally kind of included in that as an option. And so I think that, that, you know, keeping that district within this makes sense. But I probably wouldn't recommend adding residential districts beyond, you know, as the chair pointed out, some of these do permit housing and I think that that is, that's okay to have a mix of uses. But if it's a district that permits a certain level of commercial sales, then I think it's appropriate to consider that district for temporary sales as well.
Well, again, I was in a community bay city, which is a much bigger community than ours. And for a parade this weekend, the lot that we were on was a corner lot. And the gentleman does Christmas tree sales there in November and December and it's own residential. I had that discussion with him because I saw this on our agenda. And, you know, they mentioned it's Christmas tree lot. And I'll give you another example right in our community. There's a lot right at Sixth and Main Street, right across from Speedway. It's a corner lot. It'd be an ideal location to sell Christmas trees, but yet that's own residential. So, you know, again, there may be some areas where holiday sales fit. Again, not right in the middle of like Ew Gardens on a, in front of somebody's house. I'm fully agreeing with that. But again, to exclude it from all residential areas when there are residential locations that would properly fit for those types of uses, I think, again, we're zoning ourselves into Ann Arbor. We're zoning ourselves into an inner city. And Northfield Township has a very special character and a very special, is a very special community. And again, I keep saying this because I feel we are zoning ourselves into almost nonexistence. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. We do, it is inclusive of AR, which is residential. But I understand your point. Not that I agree, but. Ms. Chick? Oh, you didn't have, I thought you did. Okay.
So I will say something. Okay, so in residential areas, is it possible to have it done case by case?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I can, I can think about it, but this is zoning, so if you're permitting a use, it's within the district. I mean, we could make it a special use permit in residential. You know, but that would add the special use permit review and special use permits require full site plan approval currently.
So, okay. So I mean, I could, I could go on and on about paragraph three, but I'm gonna, I think the point was made though. And I, I think, Mr. Lippens, you may be making some adjustments to this proposal.
Well, I mean.
I mean, I could go into further detail, but I don't want to belabor it.
I would say that your comment on changing the sentence to, "A temporary certificate of occupancy shall be obtained from the zoning administrator to allow temporary use of the site for such sales," would resolve the comments that you made.
Okay, well, then I'll go further because the second sentence, "Such permit shall be issued after an inspection is made, et cetera." So it's not going to be a permit. It's going to be a temporary certificate of occupancy, maybe issued, not shall, after an inspection is made by the building official and/or fire chief. I think we may want to add in there. I certainly would think it would be prudent for the fire chief to visit. If you're talking mainly fireworks, I mean, there may be occasion if it's something else, he may not want to or may not see a need to. Or the zoning administrator may not. But I think both the building official and the fire chief or his designee should visit these sites prior to their operation. And then, so the, I mean, then it talks about the details. Such inspection shall include but not limited to wiring, lighting, apparatus utilized in the sale of the items. So I have a suggestion for the last sentence and you can take it for what you want, but I think that last sentence should be the first sentence in this number three. It should say, "A zoning compliance application shall be submitted along with a sketch plan payment for any administrative and inspection fees for review by the zoning administrator to ensure the requirements of this section are met." So in other words, you have an individual wants to sell fireworks. They come in, they're going to submit an application for, it's going to be a zoning compliance application. They're going to submit a sketch plan. How do we, or how does the township, I mean, I'm open to, I don't understand or I may not realize, how do the fees, when are the fees applied? Are they applied at the application process? I mean, most times it should be. Ms. Byrd, yes? So obviously, there's going to be an administrative and inspection cost. So the applicant needs to pay those fees. I, that's my suggestion. Does any other commission, commissioners have a thought on that? I just, if we make it clear right from the onset, then there's going to be no question.
All that makes sense to me, so I got those thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Kuznul.
I guess maybe it's worth distinguishing between Christmas tree sales and pumpkin sales and stuff like that than fireworks. Fireworks are much different beast than any other things. And if we're trying to help out Kiwanis or Joe Farmer over here or somebody else, Donahue selling stuff, we don't want to penalize them and have them go through this big long process because all they're selling is live pumpkins, you know? So therefore, I think that maybe the, there should be a special provision for fireworks sales in here. That spells it out because you're going to have the fire marshal involved with that and everything else.
Yeah.
And that's a bigger concern, I think, to the people in the community.
Yeah. My intention is not to overburden those people that, those examples that you gave.
It falls under the same category though, I think.
But I think almost it could fall, like if you're talking about a farmer selling pumpkins at Halloween, I think it may not fall under this. I think there's, under the agricultural, there's more language.
It may be a farmer selling it in town somewhere.
Yeah, town it would be.
Okay. How is he, but it depends how he's selling it in town. I want to leave it up to the zoning administrator to have the leeway to say, hey, we need the fire chief to check this out. Maybe we don't need the fire chief. Maybe we don't even need the building inspector. Maybe this looks very good. It'll be a guy selling pumpkins out of the back of his truck for a week at XYZ address. I don't know, but that's not my intent is to overburden.
That would be my comment too. If the inspections are, there's flexibility for the zoning administrator to inspire, to require the inspections, then that wouldn't actually make smaller sales burdened by the process. But there could be situations where someone, you know, was selling pumpkins or even Christmas trees in a big tent and wanted to set up wiring to go out to that tent and that, we might want that to be inspected. So I think that the, you know, the real thing to do would be to, I like the idea of referencing fees in here, but then you could change the fee structure. So you could have a temporary use zoning compliance fee on your fee schedule. And if you wanted to set that at a lower fee, that would be fine. If, you know, you could even have the uses, you could have separate uses for different holidays. You could have Christmas tree sales, make the fee for that $25 if you wanted to, you know? But in here, you could set it up just by having some flexibility for the administration of the zoning compliance permit.
And flexibility for the administration period because we don't know what the actual, we don't know what the inspection cost is. If a place needs to be inspected, obviously, those fees need to be covered. So however you could word it, that it would apply if need be, I suppose. Ms. Chick?
Couple things. So when you're talking about building inspections, I'm thinking about a structure. So if you're talking about having a tent inspected, is that what you're saying? I mean, what if the guy comes up with a cardboard table and a folding chair? Does, he doesn't have to have that inspected, does he?
Maybe not, but, but I mean, soon as you, like Mr. Lippens, his scenario was like a tent that's pitched. There's lighting appears, a generator maybe for lights. So then you get into certain things that ought to be.
Right, but not everybody puts up a tent for these kinds of sales.
Right.
And my other thought was, when I'm reading through this, and maybe it's just me, you can tell me it was just me, I was not clear that this was just for outdoor sales. I assumed it was for like, so this is, and I think that should be specified in here, outdoor sales.
Well, if we, that was why I brought up that initial question, if it would appear, if this would apply to storefronts. Because if it did, indeed, if we have that language, as I suggested, if it's a storefront in town, the zoning administrator's going to know, this is a storefront. Certainly, we want it inspected by the building inspector, maybe whoever else, electric, plum, you know, I don't know, and the fire marshal. So then, then you could apply that language if we, but if we, if we put it in there, it can be utilized by the zoning administrator. But if we don't put it in there, anything can happen, I guess. That's my point.
Well, then the language in A, the very first item where it says place on individual lots, shouldn't it just say properties? Because it could be indoor or outdoor.
Well, that's, that's a valid discussion for tonight. I mean, my take on this was that it was going to be in exterior lots because of that first paragraph.
I would suggest we revise that to say lots or structures. And I think the 75 Barker example is a pretty good example of when a sale might be in an existing structure.
Or not, based on its condition. But, so yeah, I mean, I'm open to that as long as the catalyst would be the inspections and making sure it's safe for the public and.
And based on the, based on the revisions we just discussed to number three, that would be okay, correct?
I would think so.
Yeah, I think so.
Is there any other comments on that section? Ms. Infante?
No, I'm just agreeing with Ms. Byrd.
Okay, I thought so. So I'll go, I'll just keep going. And, oh, Mr. Kuznul.
I would, I'm still back to the, the only reference to timeframe on this thing is when you have to clean up and be done with this thing. It's at the end and says, you know, three days after the holiday. How far in advance? What's the length of the permit? What's the, you know, can a guy, can a guy show up on May 1st through July 4th?
I agree.
And do we care? I mean, do we care? And if we do, or is it a renewable thing? Is it something we need to put some timeframe on?
I agree. I think we should have some parameters, but also if it's a temporary certificate of occupancy, you can actually put on a date. So this is good for this date to this date. And automatically, the three days after the holiday would be the end date as we proposed here. But I'm open to hear Mr. Lippens' suggestions on the start date. But that would be specific on a temporary C of O.
Let's at least help our administrators have some guidelines to work with so that they aren't coming there and schmoozed by some guy that says, I want to do this for six months. He says, okay, whatever.
No, I agree.
Yeah, so we need to have some sort of limitations for the administrator and for the community.
I agree. Mr. Lippens, you have a suggestion for that?
Well, so I guess we could add that the initial date of sale shall be specified on the temporary certificate of occupancy, but it seems to me that. Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that that would kind of go with the, if you have the temporary certificate of occupancy, that that, once that was issued, that would be your start day. But maybe not. But then the date of required removal shall be specified on the temporary certificate of occupancy is also there. And then I guess the question that was asked about hours of operation, maybe we should add something that says the hours of operation shall be specified on the temporary.
Yeah, but Mr. Kuznul's question's valid because you could start selling fireworks now for six months or whatever.
If you had a.
There's, we, I think we should have a parameter in here as to when a special, a holiday sale should commence. So, Ms. Infante.
I think in line with Mr. Iquinto's.
I think in, in line with, uh, Mr. Iquinto's point about the nature of our community and not zoning ourselves into an Ann Arbor-like style. I, I work in lots of different communities, um, and almost always, it's a, you know, by the next morning, you are cleaned up, or by five o'clock the night before, you're allowed to set up. There are some very, really very specific rules. And I would like, as I was looking at other communities, I, I'd like to know what ones that are similar to ours have in their zoning that is reasonable, again, according to the practices, that we are looking to support. Because the ones in Ann Arbor are stringent beyond belief. And in some other communities where I have sold honey, they're, you know, they're, they're so lax. I mean, it's wonderful, but anything goes, so, you know, what do we want to be? And I think there's a range out there, it'd be nice to have some language to work with that, that is in existence, that, that perhaps we can sort of cherry pick, or, I don't know, yeah.
It's a good idea to have, I'm sorry?
Oh, Ms. Chick, go ahead.
It's a good idea to have a set-up date and a, and a end date and a take-down date. We do that for event permits, um, yep.
What's typical of the past history?
Of the ti- of the startup time?
Yes.
I'm talking about time of day, like, we're gonna.
Oh, you mean day, time of day?
Time of day, yeah.
Okay, but not seasonal time?
No, they tell us when they, what they wanna do, and we say, yeah, your name.
Mr. Lippens, you suppose you could, uh, find some examples of that to propose force and, uh, revamp of this?
Yes, um, you know, I would say maybe between seven and eight, we add, um, uh, you know, what would be eight, but then eight would become nine. Um, the date of the sale initiation shall be specified on a temporary certificate of occupancy, as well as the hours of operation. Then the zoning administrator may require a security plan to be approved by the chief of police.
Wait, uh, back up, where, where are we at? The chief of police stuff?
He's saying that if you have, you might have a, a security plan, so if you're leaving.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah, I was thinking hours of operation, then if, you know, if you're there, gone at midnight, but your stuff is still there for all night, you might be required to have a security plan. Maybe. Um, so I'm adding that, and for discussion.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, this is not, you know, so, I guess the, the, the comment and what we could do is look at, um, examples for limiting the hours of operation. Because we could hear, instead of saying the hours of operation shall be specified on the permit, we could say the hours of operation are limited to, you know, six AM to ten PM. Or, um, or, you know, six AM to eight PM, if we wanted to.
Would, would those be more suitable in paragraph seven, in number seven?
He's saying adding between seven and eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, par- yeah, what I'm saying is, uh, A seven refers more like to the, um, uh, the traffic congestion, which will, will still, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Chick?
I think a separate clo- uh, clause or paragraph for those hours of operation and length of sales.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it, and actually, maybe fits better in three, because you're, you're actually laying out the, the basis for the whole operation, so, I mean, I'll leave it to you.
So you'd like to see that between three and four?
Possibly, or renumber, or have, add additional, an additional line or paragraph. I'll leave it to your.
Sure, but do you like the two sentences that I read?
I'd have, I'd have to look at it again, which I'm sure I will.
You, you want me to, of course, you're gonna, I mean, I'm gonna make these changes and it will appear, you know, we'll have it at the next meeting, but.
Right.
For discussion, are you satisfied, or do you wanna hear that clause again?
I'm, is it, I'm satisfied. Anyone else like to hear it?
Um, I, I, not in favor of limiting, uh, to eight o'clock. I mean, that's very early, especially during the summer for any fireworks sales opportunities. I mean, ten o'clock is a more realistic time, same thing for Christmas trees during the winter, so.
So I, that's why I think if we say the zoning administrator may require a security plan to be approved by the chief of police, that in and of itself might give us leeway to control hours. Um, and maybe we don't have to put any control hours. I think generally, you know, people are going to propose their hours based on, based on when, um, when they're likely to get sales, right? They're not gonna wanna sit there when they're not getting any sales. So I don't, I don't see the need for overregulation on the hours of operation.
Perfect.
Especially if we have.
How about a no later than date, a no later than time? I mean, that would be not unreasonable to say ten or eleven, whatever it is. I mean, downtown, you're, you're, you're around, you're around homes, you know.
Ms. Chick?
I think you used the word police chief, we don't have a police chief.
Sorry.
We have a public safety director.
Thank you.
Mr. Iquinto?
I appreciate it.
Because one person could do both, in our scenario.
So what do we think about, uh?
Mr. Kuznul.
A maximum, like, uh, sixty days. For a maximum length of. Reapply if you have to, or if, you, I mean, how many times can you reply?
Mr. Lippens?
Sixty days seems long to me, but maybe I'm wrong.
Thirty?
I would say thirty.
Yeah, I'd say maximum, yeah, I was gonna say thirty to sixty was my original thought, but like I said, Christmas trees are like Thanksgiving to Christmas, maybe a little bit before Thanksgiving, but.
Yeah, they're around thirty.
Right around Thanksgiving is when people start, that's a month right there, right? Do you usually?
Thirty days seems adequate.
I'd say thirty, if you wanna do a maximum.
And, same thing for fireworks, is that kinda normal for fireworks then, so? They seem to pop up, but as soon as they pop up, that's when people start thinking about buying fireworks, is when they pop up, is, so.
Ms. Infante?
It seems to me that what we're trying to do here is really such a challenge, because this really matters. And again, I looked at the language in a lot of different communities, and if, if we had something that was less, um, vague, and perhaps options for clauses, like, say, clause five in Dexter, in, I don't know, Hamburg, then maybe we'd have something a little more specific, that we could make some decisions more quickly and with a little more certitude, because there's precedent. Because I think coming up with some ideas without having really had much of a chance to think it through is so challenging. And again, this really impacts, for some people, this is, you know, their living, and some, for other people, it's just their traditions, I mean, it just really just matters, and it's, feels ad hoc.
Can you provide an example of the type of clause you're looking for?
I, again, the ones I looked at the most closely have to do with, well, honey sales. And, um, I, I guess it's more agricultural products, so I, I guess the ones I'm most concerned about are, like, fireworks. So I guess I should probably have looked more closely at the clauses around fireworks. Um, but I know that there are ones that take into account public safety, the nature of the specific event, whether it's outdoor or indoor, I mean, the, the clauses are just a lot more specific. Now, they don't tend to be holiday-dependent in what I've seen, but they're, they're so much more specific to the community and what the community wants to see happen in its environment, specific to its culture. And it just seems to me what we're working with here is so generalized, that we're all trying right now to make it suit where we live, and that's just such a tall order. So I can't really give you something specific, because I'm most concerned about sales. For example, the fireworks really matter in this community, people enjoy them, but they're, this language is just so difficult to work with, cuz it's too generalized for me, it's my opinion.
Ms. Chick?
I, I think, um, this one is just regarding temporary, um, holiday, uh, sales. We have other ordinances that govern, um, other types of sales in the township, so, um, it's not, uh, and those are very detailed, I think, I don't think this, this has to be detailed, but not over, like, we talked about burdening the applicants, or, uh, the people that want to do something. But there are other ordinances that we have that kinda govern those other things you're talking about.
More agricultural-based?
Yeah, agri, yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Like home occupancies and, um, uh, scans that they can have, yeah.
I mean, as, you posed your question, I mean, I suggest thirty unless there's, I mean, if we have to put something on paper, perhaps we can think about it and revisit it at our next meeting, after we've seen it or thought about it. Um, so then, then I was looking at Mr. Four, or, uh, looking at number four, Mr. Lippens. Um, such use in occupancy shall be temporary and shall not adversely impact. So I guess my, I have a problem with shall not adversely impact, because that's pretty subjective, and I don't wanna leave, I try to get rid of subjective language, I like to have it defined, but if you declare it as a nu- if you refer to a nuisance, we at least have a definition of that in our ordinance, that perhaps even the police or fire could, uh, have teeth with, per se. But adversely impact is pretty wide open, and, uh, I, I'd rather not have something in there that, um, individuals can, can abuse.
So.
As a complaint process, I suppose. So I mean, shall, shall not pose a nuisance to the adjacent, uh, surrounding property. And then the, uh, the second sentence, um, and this gets to where Ms. Chick, I think, was referring to, um, fireworks, where it's, it's maybe more regulated at the state level. Um, all licenses or permits must be obtained and presented to the, so we get to the second page. I would like to replace township with the zoning administrator for review with the zoning compliance application, instead of appropriate permit application. And, um, my thought on the last sentence of four, the township manager may require inspection and review by the fire or police chief. I don't wanna leave it to where it's the township manager's, um, option. I would rather, I, I have, uh, I rely on the zoning administrator to make a determination to, to either utilize the inspectors or, uh, a fire marshal, if need be, than I would the township manager. Because he, he's not even involved with the process, really. He, he's not, he's not the person, or I say he, but it could be she, uh, that's not the person that's actually reviewing, uh, the application, the appropriate, uh, prior approvals, if need be, or anything else. So, obviously, if it was, uh, an issue while it's operating, then the appropriate people would be responding to any complaints, so.
So this would read, the zoning administrator may require inspection and review by the director of public services.
You mean the last sentence?
Yeah. We.
I think we touched upon that on number three, that there, there will, there may be inspections.
You wanna cut it?
I think so. That's, that's my personal, I mean, any other commissioners have a thought?
No, it's repetitive, I think.
Good, okay, um.
We may not even have a township manager.
It, that's, I don't know, I mean, I, why, I mean, we don't really, it's not like a necessary statement to make, I guess. And I also had the concern of number six with two hundred and fifty feet, as Mr. Kuznul indicated, in, in the downtown district, that it just will not work.
So, did you like my suggestion earlier, just to say?
The setbacks?
Shall comply with the setbacks.
You, you, that may even pose, that may pose a problem, too, even on setbacks. If you're looking at some of the, um, the Hamlet area. I, I don't wanna make it over, I don't wanna make it excessive on where, but I, I agree that there needs to be. There, there has to be some kind of, uh.
Demarcation.
Parameter.
Well, so this is an example of something that I said, I'm not just gonna take this two hundred and fifty-foot buffer out without discussion, but it does seem excessive, and it's really designed for your agricultural districts, right? Not for the.
Right.
More urbanized section of the township.
And even then, uh, Mr. Kuznul's point was that two hundred and fifty feet, that's more, sometimes more than the width of the property.
Yeah.
So.
So, I mean, we could do, um, you know, we could do fifty feet from a residence, you know.
No, they're right on top of each other, yeah.
Um, on twenty, on, on narrow lots within the, some of the district that we're talking about, um.
The lots are only fifty feet.
Fifty feet, there may be the width of the lot, so, Mr. Doy.
I could break it up.
Does it have to be specified? You're getting a sketch anyway. There are lots of things within that sketch that are open to, you know, subjective suitability. Isn't that the same with a setback? Why specify anything? Every lot is so different, the use of every lot is so different, you'll never get a one-size-fits-all. You've got to propose a sketch of some sort of how the layout is going to be. There's gotta be some subjectivity in approving that.
That's a, that's a, a great suggestion. I think the zoning administrator ha- having, before this, before it even happens, they're gonna look at a sketch. Um, I know not having a distance in there may pose a problem, but, um, the zoning administrator, I believe, could, could make a determination, site-dependent. Um, case by case.
Okay, so, just, you know, to lay out a couple different things, you know. One, the setbacks, basically, site setbacks are designed to limit the impacts of your use from the neighboring property. So saying shall comply with the site setbacks in the district is one way to do it and, and do some protecting. The idea of having a buffer from specific residential properties is also a way of, you know, protecting that, you know, vulnerable or highest, the best use, the residence, from a use. So we could say, you know, let's apply a buffer from a residence to this use, and that would be another way. We could reduce it, twenty-five feet, fifty feet, but that's another thing. The, this suggestion that I'm hearing is possibly something that the, you know, the, the use shall be designed to limit, um, impacts on adjacent properties and, you know, subject to the sketch plan review. You know, which is, you know, pretty subjective, but might be what I'm hearing is preferred.
Although this, uh, comment about that, the sketch plan provided isn't going necessar- necessarily show adjacent properties or distances.
No.
So, that, that could open a.
Involves interpretation, right? So, you know, we're gonna look at a drawing, figure out where that is, and then we have to look at maps and figure out what's.
Yeah, maybe drawings and photos. May- maybe you could set it up such that the A R, L C, and G C districts are within the prescribed setbacks as per the, per the zoning, and all the downtown stuff shall be contained within the property lines.
Or, or, or footage, a s- a set footage, like he was saying, a much reduced footage from a.
Well, the setbacks in the L, in the district are, what are they, in the Whitmore Lake District?
Um, yeah, yeah, I agree. Another, I mean, here's another scenario, I mean, you could have residents, uh, like downtown, you could have a store on the bottom and residents on top, so, eh, eh, any, any footage you put in there is not gonna work.
Right.
Uh, and, and it was recently, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Kuznul.
You just contain it within the property lines, I guess with some, some flexibility for the zoning administrator to have some, some say in it.
Ms. Chick?
So why don't we ask the zoning administrator to give us some suggestions?
Capital idea.
Awesome, okay.
We're open for suggestions, Mr. Lippens, on that. Um, I don't, do you have anything more on that, Mr. Lippens?
I, you know, I guess I'm, I'm more looking for a, a suggestion on an approach. I mean, I think we can come back with, with a, a proposal, but to understand, you know, if, if the preference is to limit impacts on residences, we'll look for a buffer requirement, which basically is how this number six was designed, it was, it was a buffer requirement. If the preference is just to make sure that the site is designed to limit impacts on the immediately adjacent properties. you know, that's a different way of doing it. I like the suggestion of maybe looking at the districts, um, and looking at the downtown districts differently because that's what I'm hearing, is that's pretty unique. I like the suggestion of saying contained within the property in some of those districts, but then maybe complying with the districts, the setbacks in the other districts.
Okay, so you'll come up with something?
Okay.
Then number seven gets into, there's just a couple of, uh, I guess my only, um, real issue is end congestion at the end of the, I mean, we're talking about all loading and parking areas shall be confined within the boundaries and the site. And shall not be permitted to spill over onto adjacent roads. But I, I think I heard Ms. Chick correctly. She may have a contention with that. Or, and then the last sentence, such use in occupancy will not create a traffic hazard and congestion. Well, I don't think anyone has control over traffic congestion. If it's a hazard, definitely, uh, such as, uh, st- street parking or off-street parking that could pose a hazard, then I think the appropriate, um, enforcement would come, but I don't want to say in congestion because no one can control that and I don't think anyone can do anything about that either. Is there any other comments about that? Number seven, Ms. Chick?
This, the suggestion that I made here was spill over onto adjacent roads and then adding except where on straight, on-street parking is permitted?
That would, that would suffice.
And then I would be okay with just saying not create a traffic hazard and cutting in congestion.
Correct. Anyone else? No? Uh, number eight, um, I don't think I had an issue other than, um, I think it, no later than three days following the holiday, the holiday occurrence. It would be, scratch the S, I guess, if that makes sense. And then temporary certificate of occupancy obtained instead of appropriate permit from the, not building official, but the zoning administrator. And, oh, anyone else have any comments or question? Mr. Kuznol?
Instead of referring to the holiday, why don't we just say that there's an expiration date on the certificate of occupancy or whatever? I mean, it's going to have a fixed start and end time on there.
Um, well, it's, it's, uh, you say, you, you have a problem with the paragraph?
I wouldn't refer to a holiday. I mean, if, if you're, if you're selling pumpkins, is it only for Halloween or is it just for the fall? Is it for whatever? I mean?
Well, I think it just gives it more, uh, like, you know, Christmas trees and it's going to be after Christmas Day or fireworks is going to be after Fourth of July.
Really? I mean, they blow off fireworks all the time.
Well, I mean, that's the intent, though.
I get that.
So.
Um, is, are we, uh, when each, when they're applying for the permit, are they saying, this is my Fourth of July application permit? This is my Christmas application permit, or this is, this is my holiday application permit? Or it's my temporary sales? I understand that the, we're calling this the holiday sales as it is. I mean, is that even necessary to call it holiday sales?
Well, he's, I, I suggested that we have a holiday sales definition. I think that's going to help. It's going to, right, Mr. Lippens? I mean, help me out, I think.
Are we going to specify which holidays?
You'd almost have to specify the holidays.
That's why I said similar holidays because I didn't want to list all of the holidays, but we could do that. I mean, we could list no holidays and just say seasonal holidays. I got the note to do a definition. I think that's a good note. And I am, I guess the guidance that I would give is that, you know, we, we don't have to say three days after the holiday. We could just say, you know, the date of removal shall be specified on the.
It would give, um, future reference for the issuance of the certificate, though, if we had it in the language. In other words, and there's be no difference of application of the end time of the certificate of occupancy. So in other words, I can give you an extra week in this person, three days. If we have it in the ordinance, if the language states it's by the third day after the holiday, that's pretty clear.
All right, sir, are we specifying what holiday it is that we're?
I, I don't know. That's up to Mr. Lippens', uh, suggestion.
So you're saying if, uh, if, if, uh, one guy gets his permit thirty days prior to Christmas to sell Christmas trees, and the other guy gets his two weeks before Christmas? Obviously you're not going to be, not going to be selling many Christmas trees after Christmas. I get that.
Yeah.
And we want you out of there. Um, I don't know. It, it is, sometimes these are.
Well, we, what we've literally done was taken a piece of ordinance that was specifically designed for one thing.
And we're making a lot of other things.
And we're trying to cover, uh, all the holidays through the year. So inevitably, we have to deal with these uh, language issues. And although it may have seemed simple when you first looked at
Right.
what was proposed here, when you really think about, um, the actuality of it, maybe a different story. And, you know, other things come to light. Um, I don't want to leave an open end. I, I think it's good that we specify X amount of days after, um, just so there's no ambiguity, there's no favoritism, there's no, et cetera.
Well, it has an expiration date anyway, too, right? So if you apply for something, it only has a certain number of days associated with it when you get your C of O.
But it could vary from
You've got.
enforcement person to, you know, the zoning administrator to zoning administrator. We don't know.
We added a maximum of thirty days, first of all, and then we've also added the date of required removal to be on the, um,
Third day after.
The, the compliance. So really that third day is only really matters.
It's a drop dead date is what it is.
Yeah, when we pick that date of required removal, if they want to say, well, how about a week after, since, you know, I can have thirty days, we can say, no, you know, December twenty-eighth, or, you know, Thanksgiving is on this date this year, so we're going to give you till Saturday.
Yeah.
You know? So it's, it's really guidance. That three days becomes guidance because we're specifying the date and we have a maximum amount of time, right?
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Input? Ms. In?
I just wanted to say, the, I, the one I keep going back to is Dexter, and I do think that there's some language in their ordinances that's worth gleaning, um, as you look to revise, because again, we want this to be, they're like their fee schedule, fifteen dollars seems reasonable to me. Um, they're, they're, they're just some systems they have in place that might be nice for us to look at. Making our own, so that, again, we're looking to accommodate and, and not, um, set up obstacles or labor for people anyway. Okay, so.
Thank you. Anyone? Ms. Chick?
Could you send that information either to Mr. Lipp or to the commissioner so we can take a look at it as well? Because, yeah, we don't want to be feeing these people away.
Thank you. And, you know, I apologize if it was a lot more detail, but I, I would rather, uh, go through all the details when, especially now that we're looking at reviewing, you know, we're doing revision of the, of the ordinance and, um, I, I'd, I'd, I'd rather do a thorough, uh, belabored review like we did tonight than to put a Band-Aid on something and it just doesn't work. So I appreciate everyone's patience. Uh, we'll move on. Uh, there's no new business. Everyone received copy of the minutes from March seventh? Oh, I'm sorry. Did I skip something? Oh, yes. Mr. Lippens? I'll have to back up to, go to, back to ten, ten A.
So, I, this is in here as a, um, as an update. Uh, we discussed this at the last minute, or the last meeting, um, and all of the comments that were discussed are incorporated into this. So I guess the, you know, preferred procedure for moving forward is to just take any comments, if there's anything that doesn't, wasn't reflected in our conversation, but thought it was a pretty short conversation and all those comments are reflected in these revisions. So unless there's questions, we'll pull this one forward.
Any, any questions on the proposed change or the changes to the previous? Seeing none, we'll move on. It takes care of A, correct? I can move to eleven. There's no new business. Uh, number twelve, uh, any, everyone received copy of the minutes from March seventh, twenty eighteen. I make a motion, we approve with dispensary reading.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Iquenow. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Uh, final call to the public. Anyone wishing to address the commission, please step up. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
David Gordon, fifty-five, fifty-eight, Helmer. I just, uh, wanted to comment. I was at the, uh, Washtenaw County Road Commission meeting. They stay at one o'clock. There were about two dozen people there. They were all outraged at what's going on. I don't know if you're aware of it, but the county got some highway safety money from the federal government, uh, and they're cutting down four hundred and fifty trees. Most of them appear to be landmarked and heritage trees along North Territorial in our township and along Mass Road in Webster Township. Webster had a, the county, uh, road commission show up at their meeting last week. There were a hundred to a hundred and fifty people there that were also screaming at them, telling them, what are you doing this for? The county is moving forward and doing it anyway. The road commission. They did yesterday decide not to move forward on another six hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of, um, road safety improvements, according to them, from Spencer all the way to Huron River Drive in our township. They're taking down every tree within ten feet of the roadway. Um, I asked them if they have any actual science, the data that says, you know, if we take these trees down, we will have fewer fatalities here. They don't have any. It's just the assumption that if we take these trees down, the roads will be safer. I don't know about you, but when you, when I drive on Territorial, there's trees everywhere. If you go off the road there, you're going to most likely hit a tree. It's one of the things that people in this county value, obviously. And, uh, and I think they really stepped in at this time. They, uh, they only informed the eighty to a hundred and twenty people whose property actually is on Territorial and Mass Road. They didn't inform this township. They didn't inform Webster. And, uh, I, I would hope that the planning commission would join in with the board and, and write letters or make, give calls over to them and ask them, what, what are you doing? Some of these trees are three hundred year old oak trees. And, uh, there, there were other avenues that I don't think they even explored in terms of safety, such as, you know, putting that striping along the edges of the road, so when you move off the edge of the road, you hear it on your tires, that sort of thing. It's just very unfortunate because I've been a, a fan and defender of the Washtenaw County Road Commission for many years. And, uh, they really stepped in at this time. It's unfortunate that they're so out of touch with, uh, what the people in this county really want. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, move to comments from the commissioners. Ms. Infante?
I'll be very brief, but I'd just like to follow up with this residence comments because, um, I know this is not in our jurisdiction as planning commission, but as a resident, what I saw happening on North Territorial was so shocking to me because this is where we live and that is a landmark on the map, historic roadway, and, um, I, I do think the process by which the Washtenaw Road Commission went about enacting this, this policy was, I don't know if it was rushed. I'm, I'm sure I missed some memo, but, um, what, what I see happening is, is pretty devastating and I got a lot of comments from neighbors and people asking what, why the, the planning commission had approved this. And I said, you know, it was absolutely nothing to do with this, which they understood. But, um, I understand that there's, there's real distress and I just thought I would voice what I'm hearing.
Mr. Doyer? I'll speak. Um, of course, the planning commission doesn't have jurisdiction on the road right-ofways. I, I don't know the entire, uh, plan or haven't sought, sought to find out, uh, what the entire plan of the Washtenaw County Roads was. I, for one, am glad that the county is addressing a lot of the dysfunctional road maintenance and it includes the right-ofway uh, through the years. A lot of overhanging dead trees, dead limbs, live limbs. I don't know if their total plan was considering doing some positive drainage on roads or the sys- or, uh, ditches along Territorial. I, I don't know what the plan was. Obviously, we can't speak for them. If I was going down Territorial and I blew a tire on the, on the great road that it is sometimes and flew off the road, I think I'd rather go in a ditch than hit a tree. Uh, that's just my personal comments. Um, it may be unfortunate in some people's view, but, um, I, I would, I guess, like to see, uh, what their total plan was because, um, maybe now it stopped and it, and it could have improved our, uh, drainage system around our roads, which saves us maintenance, saves, saves a lot of things, so. That's all I have. Ms. Chick?
I did, to comment to Ms. Infante's comment. Um, the Washtenaw County Road Commission probably knew about this a long time ago because they would have had to apply for that grant. So it probably took many months. Um, I, I don't know that they felt that they had to notify the township as long as they were rightfully notifying the property owners and I haven't heard, I've not heard a lot about, from the property owners, how they feel about it, but I love trees. Um, and, and I, it's really sad that they have to take down the big ones. I, I'm totally comfortable with the dead ones and the overhanging ones because I do that right on North Territorial out to Mass Road and beyond twice a day, every day. And, um, I've seen huge old trees fall and, uh, and the road is blocked. The, one woman was killed and her daughter was injured from a falling tree during the storm. The dead trees, I understand, um, and I, I know road maintenance is an issue. Actually, there's federal guidelines, um, for, that goes out to the county to, for exactly this, uh, on this issue about taking the trees farther away from the road so that you, it's less likely someone's going to hit a tree. It is sad because North Territorial, and our roads out here are beautiful with all the trees hanging over them, so. Um, the dead trees and the dead limbs and the live limbs that pose a danger to the, uh, community, I have no problem with. But it is sad about the big trees and I, it does change the aesthetics of the township, so I understand people's feelings about it, I do.
Mr. Iquenow?
Uh, have a good night.
Mr. Kuznol?
I'll, I'll make comment on that. I, I applaud the road commission for what they did. I don't, and wasn't aware of it at all either. I, I remember seeing the signs out on, you know, uh, road closures ahead. I saw that, like, what, what are they doing? And then I find out that they're cutting down trees. I wish they'd do more. I wish they'd do more on Warren Road where my kids drive up and down and there's trees on the edge of the road that are just as big as the ones we're taking down North Territorial. I wish they'd take down trees along these dirt roads that are fifty-five miles an hour that people are going to get killed at, just, just because, you know, I know that if I were to design a road and try to build in the, in the county, they wouldn't let me have a road within twenty-five feet of the edge of the road. When you build a new road, no trees allowed, period. So they aren't, they aren't, they're trying to come up to their own standards now. Uh, we've got plenty of trees in this township. There are a lot, many three hundred year old trees all over this township. And I'm, and I'm, I'm glad that the, those hazards are taken out of our, our children's way and our way from, from people to get and driving down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to announce the next regular meeting, April fourth, twenty eighteen. Um, also make a move to adjourn.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Iquenow. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much.